Good evening. Want to apologize for being late. We ran just a little bit long, but it's good to see all of you. Like to call the meeting to order. Call the roll and asking for the approval of the absence of Patty Manser and John Heil.
Dr. Hartsfield, present. Mr. West.
President.
Ms. Robinson.
Here.
Mr. Oats.
Here.
Ms. Montero, present. Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Manser and Mr. Heil.
Entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, need to have a motion for the approval of Patty Manser and John Heil.
So moved.
Second. So probably move the second. Here are no objections. Would you call the roll?
Dr. Hartsfield.
Yes.
Mr. West. Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Oats.
Yes.
Ms. Montero.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Ms. Manser and Mr. Heil.
Okay, and approve of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. So probably move the second. Here are no objections. Would you call the roll?
Dr. Hartsfield.
Yes.
Mr. West. Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Oats.
Yes.
Ms. Montero.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Ms. Manser and Mr. Heil.
Yes, well, I'd also like to welcome everyone to our board meeting this evening. It's great to see so many faces and so many smiles on some of our youngsters and we're delighted that you're here and show us everything you can about what you do here at FLA and it's obvious how proud you are of your school and so I certainly appreciate that. I'd like to introduce Mr. Joel Ramsdale. He's our principal and he is going to walk us through a little bit of the introducing our Board of Education to FLA through some music and drum and band and all sorts of terrific things for our Board of Education. Our board works very, very hard on behalf of all of our students in our community and this is certainly something that is a reward for our board to be able to come into our schools and see our students perform. So we do appreciate that. Mr. Ramsdale.
Good evening, Vice Chair Rogers, the board, Mr. Tunis, the cabinet and to all of our wonderful families and guests for being here. I was asked a few weeks ago to give you a presentation on Foreign Language Academy and what makes it great. So as you can see in our agenda this evening, we're going to start off with a pledge which we start off every morning and as an immersion school, we're doing it in Spanish, French and English. Our Mandarin Chinese program, which is new to the school this year, will be performing. We'll have our band members performing as well as our drill team and drum line. So at this time, I would like to introduce Jackson Boyd from the 7th grade, Nabila Noreini from the 5th grade and Anani Alvarez Soria from the 8th grade. Please stand for the pledge.
Yo juro leatar a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América y a la república que representa una nación ante Dios indivisible por libertad y justicia para todos.
Je declare fidélité au drapeau des Estados Unidos d'Amérique et à la république qui représente une nation si déindivisible avec liberté et justice pour tous.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. You may be seated. So at the Foreign Language Academy, our vision is that our students will be bilingual and prepared for high school and beyond, and not just bilingual, but by literate. Our mission statement is that the Foreign Language Academy, we prepare our students to enter high school having met or exceeded our state standards in all tested areas, to be proficient readers, writers and speakers of their target language and to be responsible global citizens. We have three basic tenets here at FLA. We call them the ABCs of FLA. A is for academic excellence, B is for bilingual leadership and C is for critical and compassionate thinkers. Not having many of you in our building before, I know Mr. West has been here, but not having many of you here before, we wanted to explain what immersion actually is. So the definition from Merriam-Webster's dictionary, first one part doesn't match us very well, the act of putting someone or something completely in a liquid or a state of being completely in a liquid, complete involvement in some activity or interest or the one that matches what we do here, a method of learning a foreign language. What we did, we started last week, I put a padlet together and a padlet is an online tool that allows the kids to interact and write comments and I said to them, I said, "What makes FLA great?" Our kindergarten, 1st grade teachers processed with the students, 2nd grade through 8th grade actually wrote their own comments. So the first thing we're going to talk about is what they thought was the biggest benefit of our school was language. So Jocelyn wrote, "I think that FLA is a great school because this school is a bilingual school and some children goes to a school that just speaks one language, so we are lucky that we get to go to a school that speaks more than one language." 4th grader Wendy says, "I think FLA is a great school because you get to learn different languages in Spanish and you could also get a good career when you can get good grades." So success, nothing less, and that is our mantra. 4th grade Nikolai said, "FLA is great because the students in FLA learn a different language that in a normal school you never get and there is Chinese, French, English and Spanish. The teachers are very nice and it goes all the way up to 8th grade and when you go to 8th grade, you get to go to Puerto Rico, which is our end of the year capstone field trip." Nadia in 5th grade wrote, "I love FLA because it is fun to learn new languages. It is also fun to be able to travel to a place like Mexico, knowing that you are able to speak the same language as them. It's also funny and a little bit annoying when you go to a restaurant and you can order in their language and they're all surprised." What we did, after we had the kids write their padlet, I went around this past week and I actually went into the classrooms and sat with the kids during their morning meetings and we had small discussions. So this is what 1st grade thinks about immersion. Whoops. Excellent, I agree. Really? Who can tell me what language we speak in here? Yes.
Spanish?
Spanish. Why is it so great to speak Spanish when I'm only padling?
I think someone gets hurt in some game and they don't speak Spanish.
So only Spanish people get hurt?
No.
Are you sure? Why is it important to speak Spanish together?
Um, can you go to a store? Because I've learned after a lot of days when people try Spanish, sometimes I like to try going to their Spanish.
Excellent job. So for a 1st grader to be able to explain why it is important is phenomenal. At this time, we're going to actually have our brand new kindergarten Mandarin class come forward. Our teacher is Ms. Shi Wang and our students are going to be singing two songs, Xiao Bai Tu, which means Little Rabbit and Xin Yang Hao.
第二个，Mika Ruby，一起来。
新年好呀。
好，新年好，准备。Perfect. 1，敬你。
And somehow I'm supposed to follow that. So we're going to talk about academics next. As you may or may not know, FLA is excelling in our district. One of the things that we constantly do is benchmark ourselves against the rest of the district. Looking at last year's end of course scores as well as math assessments, you can see on the chart here that in the area of English Language Arts, FLA scored 6th in the district. That is only behind high schools. In math, we scored 3rd in the district, only behind Lincoln and East, beating multiple high schools, middle schools and all elementary schools. In science, we scored 3rd. I'm so very proud of the work that we're doing academically here. Research shows that any student that studies a language, by the time they're in 4th and 5th grade are outperforming their peers that are not bilingual in all academic areas. Additionally, last year, our EOC scores, our 8th grade algebra class scored number 1 in the district. We beat every single high school. Based upon our most recent end of course assessment at the end of the 2nd quarter, our projected MPI score for this year is going to be 460. I want to talk just a little bit about our partnership with UMKC. We're the only school that does have a partnership with them that allows our students to go down, starting in the 6th grade, they participate in the Spanish Web Cape Computer Adaptive Placement exam and they do this 6th grade, 7th grade and 8th grade. Our goal is that all of our students are scoring above a 441, which is a Spanish 4.5 college level. If you look at the scores here, 52% of our 6th graders are above that level, 70% of our 7th graders are above that level and 81% of our 8th graders are above that level. If they score above the 441, they are invited by UMKC to take a course. They actually go down, they take two lectures and an assessment. The assessment consists of reading, writing and oral language. If they pass their final exam, we use our signature funds to actually pay for three college credits that UMKC awards our students as 8th graders. I'm very proud of our families. As you know, as a signature school, we have probably the largest busing in the district. We have 16 buses that arrive every single day. We still have many parents that drop off our students. To date, our average daily attendance in our 990 is 95.64%. We are number 1 in the district. Our goal is to get up to 96.8, which is going to be very difficult. We work on that. We are working with our families every week. We give away $2.50 gift cards to students that have perfect attendance. They are entered into a weekly lottery and drawing to get those gift cards. So thank you so much to our families for that wonderful attendance. The next thing that the students talked about were our wonderful teachers, so I'm going to read a few of their quotes. Matthew from 7th grade said, "Our teachers and staff is really what brings our school together. They create a safe environment and teach to be everything we can be and not to settle for okay. The students here learn more than just math, English, social studies, etc. They teach us to be leaders. If you ask me, that's pretty great." Giselle in 3rd grade wrote, "I think FLA is great because the teachers are great and they work very hard. Our principal is very good and he loves all of his students, but sometimes when we have a bad day, I think we can fix it in like 5 seconds and we have great special teachers." John in 4th grade wrote, "I am proud of my school because teachers are great and I learn a lot. My personal favorite subject is math. I hope Ms. Stoll and Ms. Vegas don't get mad. I also enjoy English class. I also love reading foreign language books. My friends are great." Martha in 8th grade wrote, "I guess you could say that our teachers and society around us makes our school great. Just the environment is top notch. #Pow." That stands for Power of Words. It's one of the things we focused on this year. Words can either lift you or tear you down. Our words are powerful. So the power of our words are very important. So I went to the 6th grade classes and this is what they have to say about our teachers. Who can raise their hand and tell me what makes... I haven't asked the question yet. What makes foreign language academy great? Yes, Aaron.
Like the teachers.
The teachers? Which one?
Uh, all of them.
All of them? What makes our teachers great here?
Uh, they teach us.
They teach us. What else makes our teachers great?
They teach us what to... they tell us what to do. They sometimes help us.
We sometimes?
Well, we need help.
Oh, okay.
They help us when we need help. They encourage us to do our work.
What else makes our teachers great?
Yes. How they'll... they kind of listen to you.
Ah, so they're good listeners?
Yeah. And not just all talking.
Oh, very good. What else makes FLA great besides our teachers? Asani.
Um, all the other people.
The other people, like the students?
The staff.
Students?
The staff, the custodians.
Oh.
The secretaries, the vice principals, the principal.
Oh, thank you.
And the lunch ladies and the lunchmen and everybody.
Everybody? Excellent. So what else makes FLA great? Yes.
Like if you're new, they... like everyone just gives you a warm welcoming to the school.
Excellent. I love that. I love that. Anything else that makes FLA great?
The bathrooms are big.
That is important. The bathrooms are big and they're clean and big. Excellent. Yes, what else?
They help you set a goal.
Oh, who helps you set goals?
Teachers, baristas.
And you set your own goals or did they set them for you?
They set our own.
They help us. Excellent. Who here has achieved their goals this year?
I don't know.
Oh, okay. Who's still measuring their goals? Everyone should still be measuring their goals, right? Excellent. Evan, help him out.
Um, if you ever need help from students, they help you and they don't like... they're not like, "Hey, I'm better than you and you're not really bad at school."
I like that. So we have a good camaraderie, the teamwork, the synergy. Oh, yeah. All right. Anything else that makes FLA great?
Yeah, that's the real. Strawberry milk is good.
Excellent. All right. Thank you guys so much. So we probably have the single most diverse staff in the entire district. We have teachers from Mexico, from Puerto Rico, from Honduras, from Venezuela, from Spain, from China, from Canada, from the Republic of the Congo, I ran out of room, the Dominican Republic and of course, the United States. In talking to the kids, they also started referencing the many activities and electives that we offer. As people may know, we actually expanded our elective opportunities and our after-school opportunities to compete with Lincoln and the other schools that were trying to take our students away. We wanted to offer more to keep them here. So Janelle in 7th grade wrote, "FLA is great because we have great teachers and they care about us. I learn a new thing every day because my teachers enforce education. We have great after-school activities like soccer, basketball, etc." Carlin in 4th grade wrote, "Something that makes FLA great is that there are a lot of great activities that we can sign up for like drill team, drum line and talent shows." Gabriela wrote, "Another thing that is... that makes our school great is the cool after-school activities like drill team, drum line, basketball, volleyball, Lincoln, my favorite soccer. But mainly what makes FLA great is what... that we all work as a team and never give up and our teachers will help us until we understand it very well that we can do it in our sleep and that is why I love FLA." So in talking with our little 2nd graders, this is what they had to say about activities. What else makes FLA great besides learning different languages? What else? Jeremiah.
They have different kind of activities.
Ooh, excellent answer. What kind of activities do you participate in? Who can raise their hand and tell me an activity that you do? Yes. Oh, the panther posser. Who likes the panther posser?
Me!
Very good. What other activities can we do? What other activities? Yes.
Uh, art.
Art. Oh my goodness, art. What else? Yes.
Gym.
Gym class. Oh yes, push-ups. We got a video of our push-ups. Yes, what else?
Dress up day.
Oh, dress. What is today?
Dress down.
Yes, it is Easter. Uh-oh. Are you ready? Alligator socks. What else makes FLA great? Let's see, let's see. Who can I call on? Yes.
The teachers.
The teachers. Who's your favorite teacher?
Ms. Newey.
Ms. Newey. Who else do we love at FLA?
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Mr. D, our art teacher. That's a good answer. Who else? Ms. Barnes was my favorite. Who else?
Oh, Mr. Stigard.
Mr. Stigard, our teacher. Who else? Oh, Ms. Sarason. Oh, she's not with us anymore, but she was a great kindergarten teacher, wasn't she? Who else? Ms. Mina. Very good. So one last question. Who can give me one more thing that makes FLA great? We've talked about Spanish, we've talked about activities, we've talked about teachers. What else makes FLA great? Yes.
The students.
Oh my gosh. High five each other. Give each other a high five. I'm gonna give a high five. What do you say every morning? Success? Oh, I'm sorry. I did not hear you. Success?
Success!
Give yourself a foul in the back. Excellent job. So at this time, we would like to hear from our wonderful band. This... first, let me introduce Ms. Martinez. She's been with us two years. She's only here two hours a day and we just got back from districts and they did exceptionally well. They got a 2+, so congratulations, band. But she would like to introduce the band and have a few words first.
I'll be really quick, but this is March, which is Music in Our Schools Month and the theme this year is Music Inspires and I thought it was relevant that I am here today because music inspired me, but it was especially important because I'm a product of the Kansas City Public Schools and it was George Alter at Southwest High School that first said to me, "Have you thought about teaching band?" And I had not and as you can see, he helped set my course. So he inspired me. My students inspire me every day. I hope that we can aspire to the same greatness that George Alter aspired to for music in this district and I know that when we raise the bar, they come with us and I hope you enjoy listening to our band.
Well, we have to light it enough a little bit before we leave, so here's a traditional march.
And now, our flautist, Jean-Paul Charand, who's from the 8th grade. Your speeches are on your chair. Who's a National Junior Honor Society member, our Student Council President, Soccer Band Puerto Rico Trip member, is going to speak to you in regards to the student perspective.
Good evening, members of the school board. Bienvenidos a nuestra escuela. Welcome to our school, Foreign Language Academy. My name is Jean-Paul Charand, Student Council President, and I am honored to be speaking with you on behalf of Foreign Language Academy. I have been a student at this school since I was five years old, and it will be bittersweet when I graduate this May. I love this school and have enjoyed all of my years here. It is a place I grew up and, in many ways, has become my second home. I have had many great experiences at FLA, and here are some that I would like to share with you. One of them is learning a second language. As you all know, FLA is a second language immersion school. My parents enrolled me into the school because of its strong academics, its great track record, its inviting culture, and the opportunity to learn a second language. Learning a second language has helped me in many ways. First, it has made me want to learn about, respect, and appreciate other cultures in the world. Learning a second language has also made me a better student. It has reinforced the need for me to study harder, challenged me academically, and also expanded my vocabulary in both English and Spanish. Another great benefit of learning Spanish is it has made me, has made it easier for me to communicate with my family in Mexico and in the U.S., who are native speakers, which brings me closer to them and strengthens our relationships. Last, by learning Spanish, I have become closer to my Mexican culture and heritage, something I am very proud of and want to continue to learn more about and celebrate. Aside from learning a second language, there are other great things about FLA. One of those things is the wide variety of electives and extracurricular activities to choose from and participate in as a student. From playing an instrument in band, to participating in a sport, to building an awesome Lego robot, there are different, there are lots of different experiences for us as students of FLA. I have participated in and benefited from many of these activities and electives. One of my favorites is Student Council. It has made me a more social and outgoing person. If I wasn't part of Student Council, I doubt I would even have the guts to be up here speaking before all of you. Another elective I have enjoyed and benefited from is newsletter, which is story writing for our school newspaper. My weakest area in school is writing, and by taking this class, it has helped me in many ways, and my writing has shown improvement. We're also the only school that does an 8th grade immersion trip to Puerto Rico, which I am super excited about. This makes our students work hard to keep their grades, to be on their best behavior as good role models in school, and to give their time and effort to raise the money necessary to attend the trip. Another great aspect of our school is its environment. The school has a family atmosphere, and our teachers and staff will do anything for us as students to make sure our school is safe and welcoming learning environment. Our school is against bullying. We are doing our best to prevent it by having assemblies where we talk about its causes, by wearing anti-bullying shirts, and by having anti-bullying information throughout the school. This year, we have had no fights or bullying incidents whatsoever that I am aware of. Another aspect of the school's environment is its diversity. The students here come from different backgrounds, cultures, and parts of the city. Our diversity is a reason, I believe, we are so close as a school. Our differences make us want to learn about one another, to share about our own experiences, and to have respect and appreciate our diversity. This is something we at FLA have been doing for years, and it makes us feel like one big loving family. A big part of that family are our teachers and staff. As I said earlier, our teachers and staff will do anything for us. One example is Ms. Vargas. I've known Ms. Vargas all of my years at FLA. She was my kindergarten teacher, my 5th grade teacher, and my Spanish teacher throughout all of middle school. She is very strict, no-nonsense teacher. She does not tolerate my lack of effort. She has watched me like a hawk throughout the years and encouraged me to strive to be my best. She is like a second mom to me, and because of her, I have become a better student and better prepared for high school and beyond. This, that is how every teacher here at FLA cares for and is committed to us as students. Laziness, psh, the teachers have never heard of it. They push us to be our best as people and to do the best we can in school, as students. They prepare us for the journey ahead and help shape the road to success for each and every one of us. In closing, I wish to thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak before you, and on behalf of the entire FLA family, we truly appreciate you coming to our school. I also want to encourage you to continue to give FLA the resources and support it needs to remain successful in producing top-notch scholars and in being one of the best schools in all of Kansas City. Let's keep Foreign Language Academy strong for generations to come. Muchisimas gracias.
I had nothing to do with that line. Just saying. All right. As we mentioned, as Jean-Paul mentioned, our activities are phenomenal here. Uh, our drill team and drum line will be performing this weekend at the Snake Parade in the Brookside St. Patrick's Day Parade, as well as on Thursday at the Kansas City St. Patrick's Parade. So, at this time, we would like to introduce the drill team and drum line led by Kayla Barnes, Amalia Lainas, and Jenny Mena. I am. Um, so, our future, just so you know, we've just recently applied for the $50,000 Leader in Me grant. We find out May 1st if we become, get to become a Leader in Me school. We're very excited about that process. Uh, we are also submitting on April 1st our International Back Laureate application to be Kansas City's first primary years program. So, we're very excited about that. Questions?
Mr. Ramsdale, before we get too far, I know that some of the parents have had to get some of the younger children
Yes.
home and study and working hard, but if there are parents, very proud parents in our audience, who, if they would please stand and be recognized for what you do, thank you. And we too are very, very proud of your children here at FLA. Go ahead, Mr. Ramsdale.
I just want to thank everyone. I can't do this by myself. As a leader, I surround myself with the best people I can possibly find, and our team is what makes this school wonderful. So, if you have any questions, I am more than happy to answer them. If not, thank you so much for coming to FLA. It is such a treat to have you here and to be able to share what we do here with you.
Thank you for hosting us.
Thank you so much. So many exciting things going on at FLA, and we thank you so much. This brings us to the superintendent's recognitions.
Yes, I'd like to ask Dr. Gilbert if she would come forward with our recognitions for this, this evening.
Good evening. That is a hard, hard act to follow.
Will you dance then?
I was gonna do the step bit, but I got lost on the first clap, Mr. Tunis. Uh, I will say that we do have, if there are any families in need of Spanish interpretation, we do have a translator right in the back, and if you'd like to go and sit next to him, he will also translate. We also have childcare services available as well. I am super excited to be here this evening and share with you not only our scholar superstars, but also our terrific teammates for the month of March. I will ask Mr. Emmanuel Murray to please join me at the podium, and I'd also like to ask Mr. Rogers and Mr. Tunis to step down and join us, please. And while they're coming down, let me tell you a little bit about Mr. Murray. Our first scholar superstar of the month is Emmanuel Murray, and he is a senior who is making, taking classes at MCC Penn Valley and through the Early College Academy Program. His home school is Northeast High School. Mr. Murray is a standout scholar athlete who has worked hard to get a unique opportunity and an exciting opportunity to represent the United States in a 10-day international basketball tournament in Europe this summer. His 3.8, and I repeat, his 3.8 GPA, and outstanding play for the Vikings attracted the attention of the StudentAthleteWorld.com organization, which extended an invitation to Emmanuel to travel to Germany in June for the United World Games. StudentAthleteWorld.com is comprised of former college coaches, and we're pleased to announce that he has successfully raised enough money to travel to Germany and take this trip. Although, we have heard that he is attempting to raise some more money so that his mother can join him on that trip, and so he has established a GoFundMe page, and if you can go out to that page and help to donate, it will be really special for Emmanuel to take his mom to Germany with him. And of course, this isn't the only thing that Emmanuel is looking forward to in the next few months. As an ECH student, he will be graduating in May with both his high school diploma and his associate's degree. Emmanuel, we're so proud of you, and we're inspired by your focus and determination, and we thank you for being one of our student athletes and our scholar superstars. We wish you luck on your trip to Europe, and we wish you the best and as you pursue your college and your career goals. We wish you luck on your trip to Europe, and we wish you the best as you pursue your college and your career goals.
Thanks.
And do we have any family or any friends of Emmanuel that's here? Please join in the picture. Do you have any questions that you'd like to, Emmanuel, would you like to address the board? Okay, Mr. Oates has a question.
Oh, I was gonna say, is it possible that we can get the link for the GoFundMe account that we can get it to disseminate?
And I just want to clarify, that's a 3.8 at a college level, correct? Yes.
He's being very modest.
It is, claim that.
Yeah, a couple of questions. One, could you please email us that link so we can help your mama out?
Yes.
And second question, do you have a vision for what you plan to study?
I plan to study civil engineering.
All right. Back to Bill something amazing.
I like it.
Our second and equally impressive Scholar Superstar is Kelly Nguyen. Kelly, would you like to join me at the podium? Kelly is also a senior, and she's at East High School. And Ms. Nguyen was recently recognized as one of the nation's top volunteers. She was named a distinguished finalist in the 2016 Prudential Spirit of Community Awards for her outstanding efforts to help and comfort the sick. She has volunteered steadily for the past two summers with the Youth Volunteer Program at Truman Medical Center, where she has answered phones, checked schedules, and transported patients. Ms. Nguyen, who has chosen to pursue a career in medicine after losing her father to a motorcycle accident and her grandfather to a heart attack, also volunteered last summer at the Ronald McDonald House Charities, where she helped to plant gardens and to make meals for guests. Ms. Nguyen, your spirit, your work ethic, and your generosity is an amazing example for all of us. We thank you for being a Scholar Superstar this evening, and we carry, offer you the best wishes and gratitude with you as you do your hard work of cultivating your career in medicine. So, Kelly, would you please step over, and do you have any family?
She's willing to volunteer that much, she can join the school.
And while we're waiting for the picture to be taken, Mr. Whitehead has emailed that GoFundMe link to Sandra, who will get it to all of you for Emmanuel. Does the board have any questions of Kelly?
I would like to say thank you, and I hope you guys support East High School.
Now, we go into our terrific teammates, and so our first certified terrific teammate of the month is Carmen Hubbard. And Ms. Hubbard, would you please join me? Ms. Hubbard is a resource teacher for the Pylons program, and she was nominated for her initiative by her colleagues in the Pylons program. Ms. Hubbard works with gifted students at Garfield, Carver, Dual Language, African Center Preparatory Academy, Vaxton, King, and Primitivo Garcia Elementary Schools. According to the Pylons program director, Anna Blancardi, Ms. Hubbard is a great team player who consistently takes the lead with creating collaborative lesson plans, updating the Pylons online learning platform like Prezi and Moodle, and revising data trackers. She brings her authentic self to work every day and always operates from a student-centered mindset. Carmen rocks, which is written on her nomination. The Pylons team is grateful to have her. Ms. Hubbard, we thank you for your outstanding service to the Kansas City Public Schools. And any members of the, of the Pylons department that works with Ms. Hubbard, would you please stand? Thank you, Ms. Hubbard. Our next terrific teammate is a classified individual, is Kenneth Taylor, and unfortunately, Mr. Taylor could not be here with us today, but he is the building manager at Longfellow Elementary School, and accepting the award on his behalf is his principal, Mr. Peter Redzows. And I will read to you the information from his nomination form, and it says he was nominated by Principal Peter Redzows. Mr. Taylor has, takes tremendous pride in keeping the building clean, taking care of all of the school's pets, and meeting building expectations. He is a strong positive role model for our students and is another responsible, trusted adult who lives with great integrity and honesty. He has an impressive work ethic, and his work is always top quality. Mr. Taylor serves Longfellow Elementary consistently beyond his call of duty, appearing at extracurricular activities to support the school, aiding in projects not defined by his job description and mentoring students who need an ear. So, would you please extend our hearty thank you to Mr. Taylor for being a terrific teammate this year? Thank you, Mr. Redzows. Mr. Tunis and Mr. Rogers, I'm gonna ask that you remain here because our next segment is going to honor our community champion. And so, I'm gonna ask that Karen Grover and Dr. Luis Cordoba come to the mic to help us honor the Mexican consulate.
I'm gonna just hold that there. The organizational relationship we are honoring with tonight's Community Champion Award is unprecedented, exciting, exciting, and very much needed. To understand why it's so important, and to put it into context, I'd like to share some important information about our students. Over 25%, actually 26% of our students are language minority students. We have over 45 languages spoken across the Kansas City public schools. 20% of that, or 1 in 5 of our students, speak Spanish. And many of those students have important family ties to Mexico. Tonight, we'd like to recognize an important relationship that has been developing with the consulate of Mexico in Kansas City. The Mexican government has developed programs that are assistance to Mexican nationals who are living abroad, including documentation services, passports, consular IDs, powers of attorney, birth certificates, protective services. They provide referrals to immigration, civil, and family law professionals. They have resources for DACA students. They have online educational services, art contests, and scholarships. Through collaborative programming, the Kansas City Public Schools and the Mexican consulate are working together to provide our families with the resources they need to be able to support children in schools. At this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Luis Cordoba, Executive Director of Student Services, whose leadership has guided, established, and nurtured this very important relationship.
Buenas noches. I mean, good evening. Primero quiero dar las más cordiales bienvenidas al consul Alicia Kerber Palma, y agradecerle su cooperación, participación, y la sociedad entre el distrito escolar de Kansas City, Missouri, y el consulado de México en Kansas City. What I said is you are all beautiful people.
No.
And I just want to say this, that this partnership is truly the first in Kansas City history to have a memorandum of understanding with a foreign government. The other conversations I had with the Mexican consul was that to entertain the idea of inviting the councils from El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, because we also have our Latino population that are representative of those countries. So, with that said, and without further ado, I'd like to introduce Consul Alicia Kerber Palma.
Thank you very much, Luis. I would like to thank the Kansas City Public School for this acknowledgement. It's an honor to be here today with you. We have hard, we have worked very hard with Luis Cordoba in order to provide service to our Mexican community. And at the Mexican consulate, we value greatly the work done by the Kansas City Public Schools. And as such, we will, we look forward to continue nurturing our relationship and working together toward ensuring a solid formation and a better future for our community. I think that I need to come here to, to learn better English, because my English is not good enough, and I have to be in this elementary school. No, and really, we are very happy to be here. As it was said previously, we have a lot of services that we can provide to our community. People think that having a consulate here is just that they can come to our consulate and receive passports and Mexican ID, but we do much more than that. We do also, we have a protection department where we give legal assistance to all our nationals that have troubles like in labor issues, immigration, civil, criminal law. And if they require some legal support, we can provide them with some lawyers whenever they need it. They just need to come to our consulate and express what they need to, to be attend. We also have, we have opened this year a window to empower women. We have seen that the problem of domestic violence was a problem that has to be attended. And because of that, the Mexican consulate decided to open a special window where we provide not only with legal assistance to those women that suffer from domestic violence, but also we provide them with psychological assistance, health assistance, not only for them, but also for their kids. We can provide them with shelters. In some occasion, according to the situation, we can provide them with economic support. So, please spread the word. We can help those women. We have worked also in establishing a wonderful network with several organizations because we know that we cannot work without the support of others. And that's why we have signed several MOUs with like El Centro, with Matty Rose, with Safe Home, and with several organizations that work in behalf of the women's rights. We also have a health window. Whenever a national, you know that many of our nationals don't have documents, or they don't have access to medical services. So, if they require a medical service and they don't have enough money to pay a surgery, they can come to us. We are not going to pay the surgery, but we can provide them with information of wonderful doctors that work for the consulate, with the consulate, I mean. And they, they don't ask for a huge amount for the surgeries. They see the situation, and they need to pay according to economic situation. We also have signs, signing MOUs with Samuel Rogers, with Truman Medical Center, with Kansas University. In the education field, as it was said before, we have this scholarship program where we provide with some grants to another college education institution in order that the students can finish their academic cycle in the, in the, some institutions. By the moment, we have given $56,000 in scholarships. So, please let know that all the young students that they can come to the consulate to receive this information. We also have a very interesting program for adults who do not have access to the public education system. There is the Community Plaza Program. Through it, Mexican living abroad can finish their elementary and middle school education and receive an official completion certificate issued by the Mexican government that is recognized in many countries. Finally, we have our cultural center. Maybe you haven't heard that we are opening these First Friday Movements in Missouri, Kansas City, Missouri. In Mexico, we have this policy that if an artist cannot pay his taxes, they can donate their work, their work to the Mexican government. And because of that, we have wonderful exhibitions of painters, sculptures, and all these wonderful artists. I don't know if you have heard the exhibition that was in the Nelson Atkins about Frida Kahlo and Diego Rivera. Well, we worked together with Nelson Atkins to make that possible. But we also have these little more, small exhibitions that we exhibit at the premises of the consulate. We also work with galleries in order to promote our culture, because the Mexican culture is one of the richest culture of the world. I'm sorry I can have to say that. But I think that something, first of all, I have to recognize the wonderful job of the band and of the drums. It was wonderful. I think that the people that participate in music tasks, they always learn to work like a team, and that's what a country needs. Not only that the students, but the countries also need to work like a team, and the world also need to work like, works like a team. And in this electoral period, I think that is very important what the principal said. The hashtag pow, what you said. Well, I don't know who is the principal, but what he said about the hashtag pow, I think that is very important that the kids learn the power of the words. The power of the words, so that they can learn to respect diversity. You can destroy a community, you can destroy a person, and you can destroy a country if you don't respect diversity. So, once again, I just like to acknowledge and say thank you very much for the Foreign Language Academy, for hosting this wonderful event, for Mr. Alan Tunis, who has gone already to the consulate, and he supports the tour that we gave him, and also to Mr. Joe Ramsdale for this wonderful event. Thank you very much, and thank you all. Thank you very much, and thank you all.
Muchas gracias.
update, things that we've been doing in the Communications Department and our Public Relations Department. Mr. Tunis, would that be okay?
That'd be wonderful.
Thank you. We heard some concerns. As you know, we launched a new website back in the fall. And so we heard from our staff, from our parents, from our volunteers, from our community that it wasn't the easiest thing to navigate, that it was visually very appealing, but I just can't find what I'm looking for. And so I sent out a survey. We sent out a survey last week on Survey Monkey, and we sent it to over 10,000 people. And that was all district users, as well as everyone out in the community. It said just eight brief questions. Tell us what you think. Can you find it? Does it take you more time, less time? And so we are very, very happy to let you know that we've already started to make some tweaks to the website. If you go to the website right now, and I don't think Mr. Tunis has, I'm sorry, Mr. Brenneman has set it up, I definitely don't think Mr. Tunis has. You will see that right now, all of the information that you need is up top. So you don't have to scroll to the bottom. So if you look under District Info, and you go to Departments, you click on Department, and there is a page that comes up with district departments, and you click on Admissions, it takes you to the admissions page. If you click on Child Nutrition Services, it takes you to the Child Nutrition Services page. We also place a tab up for Employment, for the calendar. When you click on the calendar, you see the virtual calendar, but you can also scroll down, and you can get a P E F version of the current calendar, as well as the 16, 17-year calendar. And so we just want to bring that to your attention, that we are still making those changes. We have a meeting scheduled on this coming Friday, where we have invited various departments to come in and tell us, what is it that you need from the website? What would you like to see? And so we're going to listen, as we've already done so, we will listen to them and try to make this the best communication tool possible for not only our district users, for other end-users as well. I also just kind of want to just tell you really quickly, make sure that you're following us on all of our social media pages, because we will be, well, first of all, let me tell you that we have been live streaming this meeting tonight, and also, which I said, Mr. Tunis, what does that mean to you?
You'll fill me in a little later.
We've been live streaming this meeting as well, but we're also going to be tweeting a lot more. We have a lot of things coming up, that we're so proud of our scholars here in the district. Just to highlight a few, that you'll be receiving a lot of information. We would like to say congratulations to the band members at Lincoln, the Wind Ensemble. The Wind Ensemble received a state championship one rating at the large group state contest and received a perfect score. Now, not only is this impressive, but this is the 20th year in a row that the band has received the highest rating possible in a state competition. So I'd like to give them. We have a number of our students that receive straight one ratings, and so we have a number from Lincoln College Prep and other schools. And so we were asked to hold off until the end of the week before we start doing a lot of those promotions, because we were still finding out the names of a lot of other students. So please follow us on Twitter, Instagram, Facebook, all of those great things. Also, Mr. Rogers, just wanted to highlight that if anyone has an opportunity to join us on Sunday at 2:00 at the IL Field House, we have a number of our scholars that will be taking a college tour. And just to let you know, they will be departing, the buses will be departing at 3:00, and we are very fortunate that three of our Paseo Pirate TV reporters will be taking that trip. And they will actually be tweeting and kind of keeping us surprised of their adventures as they go on this tour. And so they're going to be leaving at 3:00, and they will be visiting schools such as Albany State, Tuskegee University, Morehouse College, Spelman College, Clark Atlanta University, Florida A&amp;M University, Florida State University, Bethune-Cookman, Harris Stowe State, and also the STEM Business Tour in Atlanta. So we encourage you to come on out and join us for that. And that leads me to my next brief update, is on our board monitoring timeline and our report. And we've been hard at work in developing a board monitoring tool. As you can see here, we have a timeline. What we did was, we took all of those board policies, and there's 14 of them in all, and we looked at the reporting month. And so we're actually looking at, there will be actual reports or monitoring reports on these at least once a year. But there's also, some of them are quarterly, some of them may be twice a year. And so you can kind of take a look at that and see what we're looking at there. It is our goal that we have a board monitoring report, a tool in place, that the board is accepting of, and that the administration has worked on, so that when the new superintendent arrives, we will have this instrument, and you will already know what you're monitoring and what we're doing. This next page that you'll see is, it's a one-page sheet, and so it is broken up into the board policy itself, and then the administration's interpretation of that policy, along with the goals, the trends, the key performance indicators, as well as the year-to-date information. And so we wanted to share this information with you, to let you know that this is what we've been working on. We're not here for content tonight, but we just wanted to let you know that this is what the layout of this monitoring report would look like, and we just wanted to share that with you. Mr. Tunis, is there anything that you would like to?
No, I appreciate that, and I think when we have more time, there will be a session where we'll need to make sure that the interpretation that we're making is the intent behind the policy. And so we'll be working directly with the board. We've worked with Mr. West already in helping train us as administrators to make sure that we can do this in a very efficient manner, so that not just our community, but certainly our board, will have the opportunity at a glance to see how we're doing, the progress we're making. And that will be readily available and give very current information, so that everyone does know exactly where we are. We want to be as transparent with our community as we possibly can be. We think this tool will help us to achieve that. And having that in place prior to the time our new superintendent arrives, I think will be one less thing that he'll need to do. So with that, I appreciate your comments.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience this evening.
Dr. Gilbert?
Yes, sir.
We might want to double-check that time, Sunday. It may be 1:00, I think.
I received an email from Garrett, and he says that it's 2:00, that they'll begin arriving, and the bus will leave at 3:00.
Okay, if it's 3:00, it's 3:00.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, that brings us to Policy and Governance. And we have the Board Policy 4.11, and that's the Concerns Tax Incentives. I think all board members have received a copy of that. I don't think I need to read it to you, but this can be considered the first reading. Does everyone have a copy? Okay, so this is the first reading. Okay, Ms. Tunis, business items.
Yes, just to give you the board a heads-up, as we have tried to do, those items that will require board action, as we're looking, you can see that our bids, we're opening them. I don't have the specific information, because they're still under review for our board meeting on the 23rd of March. You'll see the Northeast High and Middle School Athletic Facility, FLA Heating, Ventilating, and Air Conditioning System here in this building. So if you're a little warm, we're hoping to fix that. And then Hartman's, their HVAC system as well. So those will appear on the 23rd, but want to alert the board and make sure that you're looking for that information.
And, Ms. Tunis, the workshop presentation?
Yes, and again, in the spirit of Dr. Gilbert, I too will be brief, because this is only an update in terms of where we are as it relates to the FY 2017 revenue budget. This is the budget that we'll be looking at, that will guide our expenses for the next school year. As you can see on this slide, there will be many opportunities over the next two and a half months, where we'll be working directly with the board and our community to make sure that there is an understanding of where our money is coming from and where our money is going. We know that each month, when our board representatives provide that information, and I know Mr. Oates will be providing that at our next board meeting, as it relates to the current school year, we're beginning the process of where we'll be for next year. So you can see that we've already had one conversation, an interactive conversation with our District Advisory Council. We'll give you a brief overview this evening, talk a little bit about enrollment, and then we've got a public hearing scheduled for March the 24th. And then we'll have a board workshop. After the board election, we'll be able to sit down with the board in a very informal but productive way to respond to questions and provide information regarding the budget, where we'll then have a public hearing with the DAC in a more formal way in May, and then we'll report. Right now, we're scheduled to come back to the board for the second board meeting in May for approval of the budget. Tax rate would be set in September, and the new fiscal year will begin on July 1st. Now, the next slide just gives you some historical information. We talk about our enrollment constantly, because so much of the revenue that is generated is generated based upon what our enrollment does. And so we're using the year 1999, which is the first year, or I should say, the last year, before charter schools became eligible to exist in Kansas City. You can see what our enrollment has done, and if you look at 2009, there was another dip, and that dip in 2009 was due to the annexation with the Independent School District. So if you look at this chart, you'll see what the KCPS enrollment is, what the charter school enrollment is projected to be, and what it has grown to, the increases or decreases for both KCPS as well as the charter schools. Now, the projection that were listed there on the very bottom of this page, you'll see is approximately, well, it is 65 students less than our official count date back in September. So we're monitoring that, obviously, very, very closely. It is a projection. The projection is based on a mathematical equation using a five-year cohort survival ratio. When you look at the enrollment on the charter school, you'll see a significant increase of about slightly under 1,100 students. And that number is coming from a variety of changes that will occur in our community. There will be three new charter schools that will open, and there will be the expansion of an additional three charter schools, meaning that their grades will either be lower than what they're currently serving, or move up a grade. And so, once again, those are projected numbers that we have received from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and it's something that we'll watch. I will tell you that the projected number for charter school students by the department last year was inflated the same time, so hopefully, we're going to experience that same inflation as well. So that's an area that we constantly monitor, because again, the amount of revenue that will be generated will have a direct impact on the students that we serve. Now, some of the revenue variables that we'll be looking at, as I just talked about, enrollment, the decreases in our enrollment, or the increases in charter schools, will obviously have a significant impact on the district. Our local revenue, we currently are operating with a tax levy of $4.96, $4.95, $9.99, which is what our allowable, where the board can actually set our levy, it must be set below One of the things that is something that we watch, and I want to share a slide with you here in just a second, but is our assessed value. And when we talk about what variables do we have to deal with as it relates to where our revenue is going to come from, the assessed value is one of those areas that we monitor. And as we've talked almost every month about economic development and tax increment financing and other economic development tools that divert tax dollars, we watch the impact that that plays on the district's assessed value. And so our projected assessed value for next year would be just under $2.9 billion. Our Prop C, which is a one-cent sales tax, is projected to increase based on sales and the economic changes that our state is experiencing. Under state revenue, we're a hold harmless district, so the amount of money that we'll receive per pupil really won't change, and that's where the number of students becomes a significant impact. And next year, or this summer, I should say, we'll, beginning this summer, we'll have an opportunity to count children in our three- and four-year-old program, early childhood program. We can count up to 4% of the free and reduced lunch count based on House Bill 1689, and that provision is available to unaccredited or provisionally accredited schools. That number is estimated to hit the district approximately $1.5 or $1.6 million. And then finally, right now, our grants, as you well know, as we prepare the budget, our grant, the expenses of our grants match the revenue, and so it's more of a money-in, money-out, but they are projected at this time to decrease by about 9%, which is a conservative number. That number this time of the year normally is more conservative. And then we adjust that in Amendment Number 1, like we did just last month here at the board meeting. Now, when we talk about the assessed value, this is something, again, that we're watching and looking at the variables. This is a slide that we worked with our District Advisory Council, the parents and the principals, taking a look at the impact this plays. And what's interesting about this in my mind, is if you see the percentage of the assessed value, and what it was in 1993, and what it is in 2015. And we talk about that often, because we want to see what the shift might be in who holds the tax burden in our community. And in 1993, 45% was residential and 54 was commercial. And as you can see, in 2015, there's been a 12% swing, so that the tax burden is being shifted from commercial properties to residential properties, which is one of the reasons that we watch and look very, very closely at those economic incentives that are provided by the city. This is another chart that really emphasizes the same thing. This is only commercial assessed value for real estate, so personal property is not included in this. I've circled two areas in here. If you see in 2007, and even 2008, the year after that, we were, what our assessed value was in just commercial property. And if you look at what it is in 2015, it's at $913 million. What's interesting about that, is you look out the window, you see all the activity in Power and Light, the Sprint Center, and you see all this commercial growth and development, but yet, our assessed value is less than what it was in 2007, 2008. And so all the more reason we try to monitor those economic development tools as closely as we do, because again, as you look at, and I'll just run you through a real quick exercise, you'll see that if the assessed value is higher, or the levy is higher, it has a significant impact on the amount of revenue that the district would receive. So how much does a house that is valued at $100,000 pay in school tax? And so if you looked at this, this is the calculation that is used. That $100,000 home has an assessment ratio of 19%. The assessment ratio is a state assessed ratio. It's not something this board or the city has created. The state legislature has created that at 19%, which means the assessed value is $19,000. Now, if you remember that $2.8, $2.9 billion number, what that number is, is the assessed value in Kansas City, which is a composite of all the $100,000 homes, all the properties in our school district added together. That $100,000 home would contribute $19,000 to that number. So you add all the commercial properties, all the personal property, all the residential, and you get that $2.8, $2.9 billion number. $19,000 of that came from that $100,000 home. Now, our levy is based on every $100 of our assessed value, so you divide that number by 100, multiply it by the levy, and that home would generate $942.38. The importance about on this slide is, if the levy number were higher, the bottom line would be higher. If the assessed value or the assessment of that home were higher, or the value of the home were higher, then that would also generate more income. So this particular hand- So, this particular handout is available for you with blanks so that when you go home, if you wanna determine how much you're paying in school tax, or whether or not you're, the county collector-assessor is assessing your property correctly, if you just follow this formula, put the value that you anticipate your home is worth, take your assessment ratio of 19%, multiply A times B, you'll get C, take C divided by 100, and then your school tax will be D multiplied times E, and that will tell you what the number is. And so, if you just follow that, it sounded, it came out more complicated than it really is, but it's not that difficult if you just plug in those numbers. And what's important about that is if you look at how the impact that that plays on the district as a whole. Remember, we talked about the district's assessed value at $2.8 billion. We follow the same method, the same formula. Take that number, divide it by 100, multiply it by the levy of $4.95. The Jackson County will withhold 1.7% for, as a collection fee, and the amount of money that we budget would be $138 million based upon that value. It's this slide that you can see where we wanna monitor very closely what the assessed value is, because if we're not getting our fair assessed value on that line, it's gonna impact the bottom line. If we change the levy and it becomes a multiplier, it will change the bottom line as well. So, those are areas that I think, just trying to illustrate why they become so important. To put it in perspective in terms of what our levy is, I've just provided for the Board information about other area school districts that shows that the Kansas City Public Schools' levy is the lowest of any area school district on the Kansas City, Missouri side. And when we put that into practice and we take a look at the impact that that's gonna play based on our projections, and we try to take a look two years out or three years out in this case, where we have what the Board approved at $188 million, which is just our operating fund, it's not our total budget. Our total budget is around $240 million, but just for operating purposes, we're $188 million as of today, and we continue to massage and get closer based on our estimates. There's approximately a $2 million decrease in the revenue. If the enrollment changes, that number's gonna change, and you can see what the projection would be in F Y 18 and F Y 19, giving this Board an opportunity to take a little look into the future to see if there's something that we need to be preparing for as we go forward. Now, as I mentioned to you that there will be a number of opportunities for us to get into and roll up our sleeves and take a look at and answer questions that we might have about the budget, especially on the expenditure side. We've already had a series of questions that I wanna just point out that as we plan and we build the budget, the revenue and the expenses that are associated with the master plan will be implemented. We've had numerous conversations as a transition team, and one of the things that we start every meeting with is to make sure that everyone is aware that everything we said in that master plan recommendation will be implemented and will be included in the budget. There was a question regarding the amount and whether or not we had adequate counseling in college and career placement. We currently have a grant with the Missouri Advisory Corps where we have five, five full-time employees as part of a grant that are located in our high schools that are assisting, and we plan to bring and have more presentation about the content of that because I know that this Board has been very interested and concerned about whether or not we're providing adequate services to our high school students. We talk about any significant changes that we're looking at. I would tell you that right now, as we plan the expenditure side of the budget, the biggest change that we're looking at is part of the first bullet which will affect transportation. We are taking a look at custodial services because that contract was up, and as we told the Board a few months back, we want to make an assessment of whether or not that's something we want to continue. If we were to bring it back in-house, we know that our service, the cost of those services would increase significantly, and so, those are areas that we want to evaluate. And the question regarding City Year, we currently have a successful experience with City Year at Central Middle School. There'll be a presentation at our next Board Meeting by City Year, giving an overview. Some of you, as Board Members, visited Central Middle School a few weeks back where we saw firsthand the kinds of things that the AmeriCorps members are doing as part of the City Year program, but the expansion of that will go from nine City Corps members to 42. The cost of that is associated with a grant that we're also receiving in order to cover, to help cover the cost of that, and those are built into the budget, and we'll be able to identify and show you exactly where those are when we roll up our sleeves and get into the budget. So, this is a quick overview just to try to provide some information for the Board, especially as it relates to revenue and why we monitor the assessed value and why economic development is such an important component. With that, that...
Any questions for Mr. Tunis, Board Members?
Mr. Evans? Based up on F Y 16 and looking at F Y 19, there's almost a $10 million loss in revenue. Could you look at that and project that that would probably be some more school closures? And if that is the case, do you wait until '19 to start looking at that, or do you probably start closing schools based up on the projections that I'm looking at?
Well, it's a great question, and that's one of the reasons why we try to show those three years, so that we can start having conversations and we can determine why that number looks like it might look. If it's due to the fact that we have a loss of enrollment, I would tell you, I'm very optimistic with the changes that we're making, the additional services that we're going to provide, the outcome that we're looking at for toward accreditation, we're optimistic that our enrollment is going to shift and turn and to grow even at a more rapid rate than what we've seen over the last couple of years. If it does not, we need to be prepared and take a look at the enrollment, the capacity of our buildings, and constantly evaluate and report back, not just to the Board but to our community, so they're aware of exactly where we are and what we're confronted with. We wanna provide the best educational opportunities for our kids. We wanna make sure that we're using our resources to the highest priority, and having this information three years out gives us that opportunity to start having those conversations now and not wait until '19.
Right. Thank you. Any additional questions? I think that ends the agenda. The meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.